Okay, I'd like to call this work session of the Norfolk Public School Board in session. Ms. Tanner, could you please call the roll? Bazin?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Clanton? Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
And Martin?
Present.
Okay, well, welcome everyone and thank you for making it out to the South Side STEM Academy at Campus Stella. This beautiful facility and not in our normal downtown location, so I appreciate everyone finding their way here. We'll go ahead and get started with our item 2.01, School Board mandated COVID-19 vaccinations for staff. Mr. Phillips? As you're approaching the lectern, I just want to go over real quick the overview of tonight's meeting. We will have our work session and then we will have a public comment on our word toward for candidate selection process. We'd like to hear what the community is looking for in a candidate and any concerns that are important to them. And then we will go into our executive session. Okay? Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Clanton, School Board members, Dr. Birdsong, and other people that are here. I'd like to present to you this afternoon an update of where we are with the employee COVID-19 vaccination status process. Just as an introduction and a reminder, again, on October the 6th, that was when the board voted to mandate that the employees either be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 or submit to weekly testing. So the Department of Human Resources, we generated a COVID-19 status documentation survey to collect the documentation associated with vaccination status or beginning the process of identifying those who would be participating in the weekly testing. Updates on our survey timeline, the original survey was disseminated via district-wide communication on Monday, October the 11th. Survey reminders have been sent to non-respondents on October 15th, October 26th, November 1st, 10th, 17th, 22nd, and 29th. So we've done quite a bit in trying to engage our employees to respond to the survey. Non-respondents still continue to be identified on a rolling basis and we send the appropriate targeted reminder communications. Updated summary data appears on our next two slides. And this snapshot that I'm going to present to you is accurate as of November the 29th. So what's your COVID-19 vaccination status? As you can tell on our pie chart, a majority of our employees are vaccinated. Eighty-five percent, or just a little bit over 4,000 of the respondents, have informed us that they are fully vaccinated. Partially vaccinated, there are 97 individuals representing 2% and then not vaccinated at all of the respondents is 596 employees or 13%, representing a total of 4,723 employees who did respond and give us some indication of their status. Now, for those who indicated that they are not vaccinated against COVID-19, here are the reasons that they gave us. Eight percent or 48 are going to request a medical exemption. One hundred and twenty-nine or 22% are going to request a religious exemption. Two hundred and forty indicate that they are going for the weekly testing, which represents about 40%. And 150 individuals have told us that they're going to schedule the vaccination. And 24 individuals have said they're not going to vaccinate, they're not going to request an exemption, nor are they going to weekly test. And then five of these individuals, there's no response at all. So representing 596 individuals as of November 29th. Now, our non-respondents are classified in the following categories. So just to look at who did not respond to us. All administrators did respond, so that represents a zero percentage. Fifty-eight classified employees so far have not responded, representing 16%. Non-classroom teachers, three employees or 1%. And part-time employees, the largest group, 280 individuals, representing 78%. And then 16 teachers, representing 5% of the non-respondents. Now, what are our actions since the last update? All responses to date have been recorded and the documentation associated with these submissions have been vetted and responses will continue to be recorded and vetted on a rolling basis. So we will continue to update as we go. Employees who responded to the initial or second chance survey received confirmation of their response on November the 12th. And since that date, confirmations have been and will continue to be sent out on a rolling basis. As of November the 29th, approximately 357 employees have not responded to the survey. We continue to send targeted reminders and making individual contact with these employees. In addition, we've enlisted the support of supervisors to ensure that these employees do not require assistance submitting their responses and to encourage engagement. So for those employees that who work in areas that we thought maybe needed some assistance, again, we have worked with their supervisors, trying to get them assistance in being able to complete the survey. Employees who indicated that they are partially vaccinated received notice that they would be required to provide proof of full vaccination by no later than January 3rd, 2022. Employees who requested a medical or religious exemption were provided with the required form to request exemption on November 23rd, 2021. So we've already been able to give them the form that they need so that we can begin that process of reviewing and analyzing their medical or religious exemption request. Documentation of COVID-19 vaccination status has also been already integrated into our existing new hire procedure. So anyone that we are hiring, we already have this worked into our procedure to make sure we collect their vaccination card or get their status as well. What are our next steps as of now? We'll continue to attempt to engage the non-respondents with the assistance of site-based supervisors as appropriate. So once again, we know who has not responded, where they're located, and we're working with their departments and all to try to get them to respond so that their entry can be recorded accurately. We'll begin to collect weekly COVID-19 test results the week of January the 3rd. And our plan right now is to integrate, to generate a web-based employee portal for self-reporting of propter test results. So we're aggressively working on developing that methodology of being able to gather this information. As per the board's mandate, the administration recommends a progressive discipline plan for employees who do not comply with the board's mandate by providing acceptable proof of their vaccination status, submitting weekly testing results, and/or securing an approved medical or religious exemption. And here's the recommendation for progressive discipline for non-compliance. We define non-compliance as refusing to be vaccinated and/or failing to provide the weekly testing results without an approved religious or medical exemption for vaccination and/or testing. The progressive discipline would be, and this is a recommendation, the first violation, the employee receiving a letter of concern, which is basically a written warning informing them of their non-compliance of the board's mandate. The second violation would be a two-day suspension with pay. And then the third violation would be the recommendation for termination based upon the mandate. Per the school board policy GCPF, any employee may be suspended for good and just cause when the safety or welfare of the school division or the students therein is threatened. In addition, any employee so suspended shall continue to receive his or her then applicable salary unless and until the school board after a hearing were to determine otherwise. Oh, sorry. And I apologize for not advancing that. Okay, and with that, that concludes the update on our status with regards to the vaccination status. I can entertain any questions at this time.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Bazin?
Well, before I start with questions, so is there, Dr. Birdsong, an action that you're asking the board to take? Or is this just an update?
This is just an update of where we are with the data and the work that has been done since the mandate was put into place.
Okay. I ask that because you have the recommended progressive discipline plan for non-compliance and I was curious to know if you're asking us if we're in agreement with that non-compliance plan or not.
Basically, pursuant to the mandate, when I read over it, it needed to be progressive. This is a recommendation of the progressiveness of that. Typically, three attempts or three strikes per se is pretty common. So that's why I'm recommending a letter of concern first, because our employees are familiar with that document, a letter of concern, and it is a non-disciplinary type of document. And then second, I'm saying recommending a suspension with pay simply because in order to take an employee's pay, that would also have to come before you. So if a suspension without pay were to come before you and then later on a termination and recommendation for the same thing, it could appear prejudicial in that you would have already been introduced to the situation via the suspension without pay, having been presented to you previously on that employee. So that was why I made that recommendation. And then thirdly, the termination would be the recommendation because at that point, pursuant to your mandate, if they have not been responsive to all of the attempts, first of all, to have options, then it, based again on the mandate, it didn't give us any other options at that point.
Okay.
So again, I thought that the recommendations are through the administration to make them and to have them. So that would be my recommendation as the member of administration for that.
Okay. So along those lines, for me, it would also be helpful to have a, like a companion report that shows our staffing, our current staffing. I know we'll get one probably in a couple of weeks before our business meeting. But looking back at the October and November staffing, you know, our vacancies, you know, it looks like it's around, you know, it hasn't progressively worsened from October to November. And I don't know what it is right now, but are you anticipating resignations as a result of this mandate?
I am. I think what will happen, based on my best hypothesis, looking at what's going on with some of the individuals, with a number of people not responding, I honestly think that they're waiting to see what's going to happen. What will we do as a school division, what decisions or further decisions that you all may make as a board? And I think some people are holding out to then decide what steps they then are going to take. Because if we have reached out to individuals eight different times to even respond and they haven't responded, then that lets us know that they're not intending to respond and they're just waiting to see what will happen as a result of that.
Right. Thank you. And that leads me to my next question or point. So we have 29 respondents that have already indicated they will not do, get a vaccine testing or request an exemption. And then we have 300, about 357 who just haven't responded. So nearly 300, you know, nearly 400 almost that potentially may not be fully vaccinated by January 3rd, correct?
Yes.
Yes, because they would have to be getting their second dose by December 16th, 18th timeframe to be fully vaccinated by that January 3rd date.
Yes.
Right? So looking, going backwards, I guess personally, as an individual board member, I feel, I take this mandate very seriously and I feel the disciplinary action has to have teeth to it. And the progressive discipline plan that's being presented doesn't have what I expect to go with the mandate, which is why we put the mandate in place. You know, especially as a new variant is coming around, there's a reason why this is occurring is because we have this large unvaccinated population. And Norfolk still remains, you know, in the region has the lowest vaccine uptake. So I would like for us to be taking a stronger position. But that's, you know, that's why I was asking, are you asking us to make any decisions around it? But I'm just right now expressing my perspective on this.
Certainly, this is new territory for the administration. This does involve the employment of employees from Norfolk Public Schools. And as you know, the board has purview over that, the administration does not. But we have to respond when employees do not adhere to school board policy or mandates. So we have to have steps in place in the event that we have employees who do not adhere to your mandate. And so this is a recommendation. Certainly, if it's within your purview for us to decide what those steps look like, we are recommending what Mr. Phillips has presented to you this evening. Again, this is new territory for us. We've never been in a position to mid-year talk about a mandate for employment. And so we want to be very transparent and provide you an opportunity to provide us with feedback around what we would like to do. As Mr. Phillips stated, certainly our employees, we can assume that they are watching what's going on with the federal law. As you know, the Department of Labor and Industry has, you know, all of that is tied up in court right now. Decisions have not been made. If you've been watching around the state what's going on, as you know, Richmond Public Schools originally had a mandate for all employees to be vaccinated and recently had to change its position. And so certainly based on that, I think some employees who desire not to be vaccinated are waiting to see what the school division will do. So that's where we stand at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. I'd like to open it up to respond to this proposal for the progressive discipline action. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel, and then Mr. Clanton, and then Ms. Camson.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So I'm looking at the slide five of nine where it takes out the subgroup of individuals who said that they are not vaccinated. It has the category of medical exemption, religious exemption, weekly testing, will schedule a vaccine.
Yeah.
And so according to...
Please talk louder.
Okay, sure. So according to what we have before us, we do have individuals who are going to apply for the medical exemption if they haven't already, and we have to abide by that per what we have recommended. So they're going to be able to clear. The religious exemption, they're going to clear. The persons who submit to weekly testing, they're going to be okay. As far as, they won't be, they will not have to go through any of these processes, correct?
Right. Just to be clear, medical and religious exemptions have to be reviewed. It's not an automatic approval.
Okay, so I guess where I would need some clarity is which of these, for the medical and the religious exemption, how many of them have been reviewed and approved? Because according to the chart, we only have five individuals who have not responded at all. I'm sorry, five plus the 24 who say that they will not vaccinate or get tested. So we're looking at 29 individuals that would fall into the category of the punishment or termination unless the individuals with the medical exemption or the religious exemption cannot provide the proper documentation. That's, is that correct?
Well, I think what I understood too, but there's also 357 individuals who didn't respond to the survey after multiple attempts. So if we were to assume that those multiple attempts and they don't respond is really an indication of their unwillingness to be vaccinated, it could potentially be that 357 plus the 29. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. And also, we have to remember that even if someone is granted a medical or religious exemption, then pretty much they're going to then default into the weekly testing because of their choosing to apply for that and then that be granted. And then even though individuals have signed up for weekly testing, it then comes down to, are they actually going to do it? And if they then don't do it, the same thing, they would fall into the progressive discipline steps that we've put in place there. So that's what's been indicated to us. And so we still have to always think, well, what if they still do not comport? They said they're going to do it, but then they don't comport with that. That's the purpose of us working to put together this web portal to be able to capture or allow these employees who said that that's what they're going to do to upload their weekly testing results so that we can then track and see who's doing this and who's not doing it. And then on the next page, as you addressed, those that are non-respondents basically fall into the categories listed there. You will notice that the majority of them are part-time employees that are non, they're not on a contract. These could be athletic coaches, tutors, people who got the survey, but they still just chose not to respond. And some of them may be even thinking, well, I'm not coming back to work anyway, so I just won't respond at all. But the thing about the part-time employees that you remember is that they are not entitled to grievance rights per se, meaning that they can't come for a hearing before you if they chose to say we took their job from them or something like that. So these 280 individuals, because there's no contract, the most it would be is a memorandum of understanding. And pursuant to a memorandum of understanding, the employment agreement could be ended by either party at any given time, either us or them. So these individuals are basically going to be the easiest group to deal with because you would never have to see them in any type of forum. So it really just depends on, once this rolls out, then what do individuals who, what does this other 15% of our employee base actually do? Because the 85% have already submitted their cards in, said they're fully vaccinated, they're checked off, they're in the system. We're going to be dealing with the 15% in varying degrees depending on their situation as it stands right now.
Well, I would support the recommendation of the administration at this time since Dr. Birdsong said this is her uncharted waters. They're going about this trying to be very methodical, but also transparent. So I would support them. And if we still have individuals who are non-respondents and not getting vaccinated or not submitting to the testing, then it comes back to us and we reevaluate the situation. But I do support what Ms. Bazin is saying about the seriousness of the, you know, the disease, the new variant that might be coming through and just the fact that we're trying to do this for the safety of our students and staff, not to be punitive, but to be in the conscious mind of safety and preventative medicine. So I say we'll go with the recommendation of Dr. Birdsong and then reevaluate once the mandate is fully in place after January 1st.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Mr. Clanton?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So my question is actually directed at Attorney Cloud. Can you hear me a little better?
I can hear you.
All right. Okay, there we go. So my question is actually directed to Attorney Cloud. Just in essence of the overall mandate that we have, and I know that we have this piece that's here with a new changing of an administration, new Secretary of Education, all these other things that are coming in there. Is there anything, we've said at a local level as far as a mandate, that could potentially overturn what we have from a governor under a new executive? I mean, emergency order or anything like that?
Well, it's hard. I can't predict the future entirely. But I don't expect, what you may see is that in certain areas, like the mask mandate, for example, the governor, the new governor, and I'm presuming we're going to see a new Secretary of Education, a new state superintendent of schools, and probably a new public health commissioner, all of whom are appointed by the governor. They might eliminate the state mandate, but that would not, you know, take away the ability for local school divisions to make such decisions. I don't foresee Virginia going in the way that, I checked the other day, there are now nine states that at the state government level have prohibited and even imposed penalties on local school boards who attempt to impose things like vaccinations or even masking requirements, Florida famously. I don't see that happening in Virginia. So that I would expect that the ability of a school board to make a decision for itself regarding vaccination of its employees will continue.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to ask that question and to make it very transparent and clear because if there are those who are holding back because they think that what we have put in place for the safety and security of those that are in our buildings will potentially change, I think that this board is pretty much, I won't speak for everybody, but this is what we voted on. This is what we said that we were going to move forward with to ensure the safety and security of all those that are in our school buildings. And, you know, that and that were changing, you know, this is what it is. And so what the administration is giving to us here today is a recommendation regarding disciplinary action. I mean, I support it. I don't know how I feel about the two-day suspension with pay. I just feel like that, but I understand what that is. But I think that individuals need to understand the seriousness of this. There is now new variants out there that they're talking about potentially, you know. This thing is with us and so we have to do what we need to do to create an environment that's safe. And I would hope that those who are working with our young scholars in our buildings and with their fellow colleagues would do everything that they possibly could. And we're giving those things there, we're giving options. But I did want to ask one thing I want to get clear, and I think you asked that, Mr. Phillips. So when I saw that 280 individuals, potentially the part-time, so all of these individuals we know have received a survey.
Yes.
Because I know we have some part-timers who may not potentially have an email or something like that, but these are all we know have received.
Yeah, these individuals should have received the survey because we had worked on the issue that you're talking about as far as making sure that everybody had an email address. So that, these individuals all should have an email address. Whether they're checking it or not is another question. But they should have received, have an email address that they received this. They just hadn't responded.
Got it. Thank you. So again, like I said, Dr. Martin, I would, I support the recommendation from the administration. This is uncharted territory, but I appreciate having something in front of us so that we could at least deliberate about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Go ahead, Ms. Camson.
I'm okay. My question was answered during the other questions.
Mr. Jordan?
Just some clear, make sure I'm understanding some pieces here. So with the, going back to the slide that Dr. Gabriel was referencing, well, maybe I'll start with slide four. So the fully vaccinated, if I understand correctly, the 85%, they have completed the survey and they have provided you with documentation to support the fact that they're fully vaccinated?
Yes, they've given us their card and that card has been scanned into their file.
And then the partially vaccinated, there was a reference to having to demonstrate that they're fully vaccinated by a certain date. So with the partially vaccinated, you have what, documentation that shows that they've gotten one shot?
We may not have any of that documentation. We may not have any of that documentation. They may have, that's how they responded. And, and the response to say you were partially vaccinated meant that as far as the Moderna vaccination, maybe you, you've only gotten one of those shots. You didn't get the second shot. And also, the same with the Pfizer. You only maybe have gotten one of the shots, but you never completed the process. So, that made you partially vaccinated. So, that may be how they responded to the survey, that they are partially vaccinated, but not fully.
Okay, so then only the fully vaccinated, do we have documentation that shows, that verifies their status?
Right. That's why we're telling the partially vaccinated that they need to move forward with getting their, their second vaccination to make them whole if they were, received one shot of Pfizer or one shot of Moderna.
And then those who indicated they were applying for an exemption, it was said that that's being vetted. When do you anticipate that vetting being completed?
Oh, and, well, it's underway right now. Like I said, we sent out the, um, the actual forms to the individuals who selected this. So, people are in the process now of sending that information back to us. So, as they're sending it to us, we're, we're vetting it. If it's clear on what they're stating, then, then that will, that will go through. If it's something that we're not certain on, particularly with the religious exemptions, then we will run those through legal for an additional set, additional review before a decision is made. And then if they are granted a medical or religious exemption, then they would have to be part of the weekly testing. However, they could also, because basically the accommodation for the exemption is the weekly testing. But we could always run into someone who says that they don't want to do the weekly testing either. So, then that's another category that we would then have to deal with those individuals who could very well say, I'm not doing that either. So, in some ways, this will be individualized depending upon the responses. But I, I hope that some of those kinds of special situations will be fewer than, than greater.
And then as of, as of right now, those who would submit to the weekly test, the process of doing the weekly test is solely on the responsibility of the employee. The school system is not providing testing or resources for weekly testing. Is that correct?
Right. I have not been getting any, given any information that we would be providing any resources. What we are doing is we will be informing individuals via a letter, you know, of where they could possibly go. We'll be making, you know, we don't, we know, here's some options, you know, the, the drugstores or doctor, um, the health department, but it's going to be, the onus is going to be on them to actually then do it and keep up with it. And that's the thing, if you, weekly means weekly, obviously, and that's why we're developing this portal as a way to be able to check to see, did they actually upload their information? Did they do it? Or did you just sign up for this, but you still never did anything? Because that's how discipline could also come. You signed up for weekly testing, but they never actually did it. Or maybe they did it one week, and then the second week comes and we haven't seen where something is uploaded. Those individuals will also have to be dealt with appropriately and accordingly as well.
But it is possible that if the school division decided to provide resources to support weekly testing, that's something that could be considered.
Certainly, if, if that was partly something that we were given as an option to, to give our employees.
And then my last question, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
If I may respond to that, Mr. Jordan, we did apply to be a part of the VISTA program, and we were assigned a vendor, but we have not heard anything else from the vendor about moving forward with supporting testing of, of anyone, staff or students, but we are a part of that program. We will certainly, once it's up and running, make that available to staff, but as, you know, it relates to what Mr. Billups was just saying, that, that cannot be a responsibility of, of the school division. I'm not sure how we would be able to, to manage all of that, but we will have resources available to support the testing if that's what our employees decide to do through the VISTA program, if we can ever get it up and running. I did voice a concern about that this morning to our representative from VDOE.
And then with the, I guess the, the, I don't know if it's appeal, whatever, whatever the, the hearing process, can, can you just kind of explain what, what that would involve? I mean, if it's, let's just say we had 200 individuals that were coming forward with a hearing, what is, what is that a?
That would be a severe bottleneck.
I'm sorry?
A, a severe bottleneck is what I'm saying.
Can you speak into the?
That would be a severe bottleneck if that were to happen because depending on the employees and what group they fall in determines what type of grievance right they have. So, for exam, for example, if there were, say, 50 certificated teachers who are in continuing contract status, who then are entitled to a, a hearing with a, um, hearing officer and all of that, that's, that would be very time-consuming because we would have to, you know, work with the attorney's office, we have to get a hearing officer, it has to be scheduled, all of that would have to happen. So, obviously, the more of those we have, then the, the, the longer it would take to try to work those through the process. If it were a, a, um, a class of odd employee, they're entitled to a review meeting that typically would never come before you. It comes before the superintendent and/or her designee for that, and then that's how they end up being terminated through that process. But again, that does require quite a bit of scheduling and planning as well and looking at, you know, the information. So, depending upon the number of individuals, who they are, that determines how much time and work that would go into it. But frankly, any type of hearing with a hearing officer for a continuing contract teacher requires a lot of effort, a lot of, of collaboration between our office, the attorney's office for Norfolk Public Schools, as well as the employee, and typically he or she has an attorney as well. So, there's a lot of, of work that has to go in for the hearing to actually take place.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bassine?
I just wanted to get a better understanding. So, so the first violation, you know, would go out for anyone who hasn't provided documentation on January 4th, correct? Like, I mean, could potentially?
Yes, potentially.
Well, basic, can you, can you walk us through, like, so the first violation occurs, and then you still don't have that documentation, then, then when does the second, like, so what's the timeline like?
Well, as soon as possible thereafter, but again, you have to remember we're working, if that's the case, we're going to be working with so many people with a limited staff that we have to do this work. And so, certainly, we're going to try to follow with the individuals as quickly as possible to see who was non-compliant, who didn't turn it in, turn the letters back around, get it to them, get it recorded, um, and then see how long it takes them to turn it back around. So, there will be definitely some days in between each, each level, it could be even longer than that, because frankly, this requires a lot of, of work to, in order to manage all of this process that's been thrust upon us.
Okay.
Ideally, Ms. Bassine, the first week that the employee would miss testing, they would get their letter of concern. We are requiring, the board is requiring weekly testing. So, the following week, if they don't submit testing, ideally, they would get their two-day suspension with pay. Then the third week, if you still don't, if they don't adhere to testing, then the recommendation for termination, ideally. Again, this would be a new process for us, but ideally, that's how it would, how the process would work. Because we're requiring, the board is requiring weekly testing.
Right. Okay. Thank you, thank you for that.
Dr. Martin, ask one other question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I, I know, you know, school board members, we aren't, I guess, we're not considered employees, so to speak, but I assume we would probably need to do the same thing. Can you just describe, so if I want the process by which the documentation is submitted and how it's, how it's secured? So, if I'm filling out the survey, I say I'm fully vaccinated, I take my card out, my wallet, what do I do? I scan it and upload it?
Yes, you scan it, upload it to us, and then it would be scanned into your personnel file within our, within our offices. And no one can just go into a person's personnel file without having a business need to do that. So, it would be under that person's, um, um, file in our, in our system.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Billups. We will move on. We didn't take action. Who's, how many are, would, are in favor of what is being proposed? Just kind of raising hands. What modifications? You want it to have more, be more aggressive is what I'm hearing. I'm sorry, you're, Ms. Bassine, what I'm hearing you say is you want it to be more aggressive.
Yes.
Right? Mr. Jordan?
Well, I wasn't anticipating, you know, I was, thought it was a work session, I wasn't anticipating any action today. So, I just, I've received the presentation and just like to have more time to, to think through it. So, I wasn't anticipating having to vote on a recommendation today at a work session.
Well, I mean, I just want to understand where everyone's, everyone is sitting now.
Yeah, just like to give it, give it more thought and...
Do, do you have any specific changes or anything that you?
No, I, I think when we, we talked about this, we said it was, uh, important to have some teeth to it. I, I support that. You know, a lot of things have been presented here, you know, both in terms of testing and impact and, you know, yeah, I appreciate Mr. Clanton raising the questions around making sure that we're reaching people. So, again, my, my orientation is that work session is more informational. So, I, I think if I had known that we were going to be taking some action today, I may have asked some other questions earlier, but I'm just not prepared to do that.
Yeah, that's all.
Pardon me?
I just wanted to give Dr. Birdsong a sense of, of where we are with it, so...
Yeah, I, I'd just like to have more time to, to think through it.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have, um...
Just one question, though. Um, just so I can put clarity, this particular presentation or the recommendation was posted on Friday, right? Or was that put up today? The recommendation that we just got with all this information was just put up today?
All of the reports were, all of the reports were uploaded on Monday, closing business.
On Monday, okay. Thank you.
In accordance with our existing practice around that and holidays.
Could I just speak to that for a moment? Because I, I think that comes up often. I'm, I'm not, I was not in any way suggesting that information was available. What I'm saying is, is that what I'm accustomed to is the work session was an opportunity for us to discuss things. The business meeting is the time that we would take action, and I didn't see anything on the agenda that said, hey, look at this page on a particular report because we want to vote or take some action today. It's all just simply saying that that's not how it was oriented, and I just like to be able to consider additional thought, that's all. It had nothing to do with the timing of the presentations or when reports are uploaded. It's just a matter of the function of the work session typically and the function of a business meeting.
I agree with you. I did not take it any other way.
I, I'm sorry?
I agree with you, and I did not take your questioning or your comments.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. We're going to move on to, um, to item 2.02, our PALS data, and we have Dr. Poole here to present to us. So, welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here to present data on the fall administration of the phonological awareness literacy screening, or PALS, assessment. This data, the data in this presentation is data pulled from November 15th, 2021, and this is a final presentation, not the draft presentation. PALS is administered to students in grades pre-K through three, and it is our universal screener for grades K through one. In pre-K, there are six tasks: name writing, rhyme awareness, sound awareness, upper and lowercase letter recognition, and letter sounds. For kindergarten, the assessment measures rhyme awareness, beginning sound awareness, alphabet knowledge, letter sounds, and spelling, with a sum score being calculated by adding all of these scores. In grades one through three, PALS creates a sum score which focuses on word recognition, spelling, and letter sounds for first grades, and reading levels, spelling and phonics, and grouping for second and third grade. We'll start today with the pre-K data. For writing, the maximum score is seven, and students are asked to write their name. In this data, we want to see, we want to see decreases in the lower bands and increases in the higher bands. With a decrease of 3.6% in the zero band from last year, we see an improvement in scores for the fall administration. Additionally, with increases in bands four and six, more students are starting with higher scores this fall than they did last fall. For rhyme awareness, students are shown a target picture, and they're given other pictures to select that rhyme with the first picture. As with writing, we are looking for increases in the higher bands and decreases in the lower bands for rhyme awareness. Therefore, the data shows upward movement in scores this fall. For sound awareness, students are shown a picture, and the students orally produce an initial sound. This data shows increases in the higher score bands over last year's data as well. And finally, for pre-K, students are asked to recognize letters with a maximum score of 26. This data shows a decrease in letter recognition from last fall's administration. In preparing for this year and in the response to this data, the following is being done throughout our pre-K classrooms. Small group instruction is provided by the teacher and the teacher's assistant. They're using the pre-K creative curriculum as well as an online resource, Ready Rosie, which has been shared with families for home use as well. There is coaching support, and class observations are being conducted as well. Additionally, there are three pre-K sites that have been given PALS tutors in addition to all the other elementary schools, and they're using the Hagerty and Scholastic Phonics First Readers to provide additional instructional support to pre-K students. All of the tutors and teachers have received professional development with these resources. Let's now move on to kindergarten. In kindergarten, students are identified for additional instructional needs based on a cut score that is equal to or less than 28. This slide shows the number percent of students identified for last fall and this fall. There was a decrease of 7.9% across all students who are identified as needing additional instructional supports. The largest two subgroups identified are students identified as English learners and Hispanic. Asian students had the only decrease. Here's a breakdown of scores by category of students who met the benchmark. The two areas showing improvement were rhyme and beginning sound when compared to last year's data. This slide has the sum score bands for the past three years. The goal for this data is to have a skewed right-side graph with more students in the higher ranges instead of on the left side. Let's go on and move to first grade. This shot, slide shows the completion rates for all first-grade PALS fall administration by subgroups. All groups were above 90% except for students with disabilities. Here is the data on the percent of students identified as needing additional instructional assistance. As seen on the last column, the percentage has increased within all subgroups. As a reminder, this is the first year many of our first graders have been in school during the beginning of a school year. Here is the breakdown by category for first graders, with 47.8% of the students meeting the benchmark score. And again, here's the graph of trend data for first grade by score band, and as with kindergarten, the goal is to have a right skewed graph. And finally, we'll move on to the grade two data. Starting with the completion rates for grade two, they were all above 90% except for students with disabilities who are at 84.3%. Students in the Asian subgroup showed a decrease in the percent of identified students, and all others showed an increase, with the highest areas being our students with disabilities and English learners. For grade two, we saw decreases in all areas for students meeting the benchmark scores. With the increases in the lower bands, this shows many students entering second grade are unable to read or decode any words on the first grade word list or spell the words on the spelling lists. We currently have second graders who do not recognize letters or know letter sounds. This is why we have created a systematic phonics curriculum and phonemic awareness curriculum for all second grade teachers, additionally providing small group instruction resources for teachers to use to meet the needs of students and the additional intervention through the use of PALS tutors. This slide shows the comparison between the STAR and PALS data for second grade students with the number of tests administered and the comparison of students identified with each assessment. I think it's important to note that the identified bands are very similar across the board when the numbers of students were... I think it's too important to note that the identified bands are very similar across the board when the numbers of students were high. Planning for these deficits and in response to the data, supports were added in several areas this year. From the Office of Elementary, English, and Language Arts, there's a focus on foundational reading skills and whole group instruction with daily lessons in phonemic awareness and systemic phonics. There's also a focus on small group reading instruction to meet students at their level in tier one instruction. The addition of PALS reading tutors using the Scripps curriculum, of which the positions are eighty-one percent filled over, and over a quarter of the tutors being fully licensed teachers, and the implementation of reading specific software such as Lexia Core Five has been implemented to create supports for students identified as needing increased instructional assistance. Title One continues supports with teachers, assistants, part-time positions, instructional coaches, and supplemental resources such as books and home libraries for students. Also, this data is a primary focus at the school-level data meetings where a member of CNI, learning support, special education, school leadership, and Title One work directly with the principal and their teams to review data and offer support at the individual level of each school. The continuation of professional development in letters is in place with the addition of cohorts of teachers to include specific special education teachers. Hagerty Reading Training using Road to Reading Kits, which, which focus on fluency and phonemic awareness is in place for eighteen special education teachers across thirteen elementary and K eight stu, schools, and the use of rethink education data collection and progress monitoring for all students with disabilities to assist with goal setting and lesson plans um, so that they can easily be individualized. That's the end of the presentation. I thank you for your time and allowing me to present this data. I stand ready for any questions you may have.
Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Thank you. Are you, will you be administering a mid-year PALS?
Yes.
So we will be able to see that growth?
We, yes, we are administering the mid-years PALS, um.
January?
I'm sorry?
Will you be administering a mid-year in January?
In January.
Okay. Um, when you're doing the slides, I need to see more emphasis on benchmark in the different slides so that I can compare better on the percentage of kids that are where they're supposed to be when they do the benchmark. It, which you do have in, in a couple, a couple of slides, but I'd like to see them when we do percentages of kids that are making benchmarks at each level so that I can see what our subgroups are doing. And, and that's the whole ballgame. Can they do benchmarks? I, we were identifying the areas that, that they were the weakest in, which meant that they were the ones that had the lowest number of children making benchmark. So if, that would just help me when I look at the data to see that information.
Absolutely. And, and do you know that that is absolutely reviewed at the school level and in the classroom level, of course?
Okay. And the next concern I have is vocabulary. Are we still doing, there used to be a list of kindergarten words that we were using. Is that still in place or has the?
Yeah, we still have words. We still have word walls and we still focus on vocabulary.
Yeah, I'd like to see a focus on the acquisition of vocabulary, especially after seeing the data here. Do you use Dolch words or are you using a list from PALS?
I think we combine them.
Yeah, they're kind of the same anyway. They're pretty much the same.
And plus with the software integration, you know, there's even an increase to meet the student at their exact level.
Right, we, yeah, cause when you were showing the data for acquisition of vocabulary and that was just sad, sad, sad. And children in kindergarten should be reading the basic sentences. So I'd like to see some way that you could report that out.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Ms. Bassin?
Thank you. Um, so I guess this is a little bit of a piggyback on, um, something Ms. Campson just brought up. So slides, and this is from, you know, as a non educator and as a board member, I'm, I'm trying to understand some of the information that's provided. So for instance, slides, uh, five through ten, uh, for instance, that, that what, you know, I can see the usefulness of that data.
What?
Just keep going. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I can, I can see the usefulness of that at the classroom level to be able to give targeted interventions for the students in those areas. As a board member, what is it, I mean, I can tell, you know, obviously the red is that they need, that they need interventions there, but as a board member, what is it that you want us to take away from those particular slides?
So I, I think these are just the overarching data. So you have an understanding that, that, you know, in, in our fall assessment, as we anticipated, we have lower scores than we have in the past and that, um, the response to the data has been, you know, the, the content, the curriculum, and the supports we put into place to start this year, but really just for you to have an understanding of the overarching data. And, and you know, in some of the areas, we did see some growth. Like in kindergarten, we saw some growth, but then we got to letter recognition even, and it was, it was, we saw some, some decline. So really just the overarching pieces of data, so that you have more talking points to say, well, yeah, we, we did, you know, we didn't do well here, but we, these couple areas, we did see some strength. You know, is really the purpose of the, the general data that I try to share with you guys.
So, so that could be summarized that we saw growth in these areas and declines in these areas.
Right.
I'm just trying to think of a way to make it much more informative and talk, you know, targeted to, for us. The other thing, so I'll move on. So, you know, I thought I was looking at this presentation, having also the chronic absenteeism data also. I noticed the first and second grade, we had, saw high levels of absenteeism. And I, we also see that, um, the potential impact of that in the data, in the PALS data. So, um, I guess, what, what interve, so, so from a foundational level, you know, it's hard for me to really talk about just the PALS data in isolation of the learning conditions. And I would like to hear more about the learning conditions that is facilitating the outcomes that we want to see. So if we can somehow integrate those pieces, is something that I personally would like to see more of, um, in, in our board level discussions, um, as we go forward. The last thing is for, how is the PALS administered for EL students?
For EL students? It's, um, I'd have to check, but I think it's administered in, in English and it's face-to-face because it is just a, it's a very rudimentary level of language and phonics.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll let others go.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to, um, recommend again that, uh, similar to what Ms. Bassin was saying. I think if we receive this report, if we just got a brief, uh, you know, paragraph or two that highlighted takeaways that we should consider and be able to monitor as we move forward would be, be sufficient. I, I appreciate all the effort that goes into the, into the data sharing. But I, I do think for us, um, at a, at a board level, getting the brief, some of the points that you made are important. And if there are additional questions that individual board members have, then there's, I think there's an opportunity to, to do that. But I think the brief would be, would be helpful. And the other thing is, um.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes?
Dr. Birdsong would like to respond to your first comment.
I, I really appreciate that comment because that's what we would like to do, give you board level, high level information about the work that we're doing. And just from our experience, Mr. Jordan, if I can be transparent, when we've done that in the past, then we've been asked specific questions about grade levels, subgroups, and, and all of that. So we're trying to find a good balance between what the board desires to know about the data that you need to make decisions about policy. What is it specifically? How can we present that to you? Because we, we've tried that before, high level, and then we were asked to provide a deeper dive into the data. So we're trying to find the balance between, between not giving you too much, but giving you enough so that you can use it for policymaking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, um, there's data and then there's information. And so, um, I've tried to lean on the side of, you know, if there's data available, if it's online and people want to have access to it and read it and review it, I think that's a good thing. I think when we come to work sessions or when you all are sharing info, data with us, it's really the information of what the data is telling us that I think is, is important. And if we have questions, we can follow up on that. But I still think, and, and different data sets may result in different questions. I just think with this type of data set, if there is a brief that goes with it, if some questions come up, that we can have a process for then determining, hey, you provided this data, you provided this brief, we received these series of questions, maybe as a result of all the questions that we got, we'll make it, turn it into a presentation, you know, at a future time and go, and go in depth. I just don't want to see you spending a lot, a lot of time preparing the, the PowerPoint and then without, without the brief. I just think that there's some things in North Public Schools, I think has been good with it over the years of just presenting briefs and sending it to the board and the public and allowing folks to, to review the brief. And then if questions evolve from that, that that would be a way of hopefully finding that sweet spot that you mentioned. But the other piece I was going to say is.
I'm sorry. Just before we move on, though, how does everyone else feel about making this more of a brief and less like the data presentation?
Is it for PALS?
How does everyone feel about, um, making this more of a, a brief? An overview?
I mean, I'm saying this for PALS.
We would certainly like to know because this, this presentation, again, is a result of what we have been asked to do. And so we, we're trying to give you the, the data and information that you've asked us to provide. So we really need to know what the board's desire is.
I would like to see it as a brief.
As a brief?
Yes, I agree, I agree with Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, yeah. And what I was going to say additionally is, um, so I know we have this presentation and we get comparisons to previous years. I don't really know to what extent, uh, it gives us comparison to how similar demographic school divisions are doing. So I don't know if there's a way in that brief or in the report to not only show this is what North Public Schools was doing last year versus what North Public Schools is doing this year, but how does North Public Schools compare to, you know, Newport News or Virginia Beach or whatever school divisions that may be similarly situated so we can see not only how we are doing within, but we can also see how we're doing with some of our peers.
I'd like to add to that too, is that not necessarily other districts, like just because we're right next to Virginia Beach, we compare ourselves to them, but other districts across the Commonwealth that are similar to ours.
And I'm not sure when that data would be available, the timeframe that, you know, or if it's available at, at all. I'm not even sure if other boards even collect this data or, or get briefs on, on this data. So that would, perhaps could be a challenge for us.
Okay. Well, thank you for, did you have a comment, Dr. Gabriel?
Yes, um, with regards to the question about brief versus presentation. So when I think of this information, I, I understand how critical it is because we are so concerned about the reading proficiency within our school division. And quite frankly, if we're going to compare ourselves to other school divisions, I'm going to go back to Ms. Campson's comment about the benchmark. What is the national benchmark? If this is a, is PALS is a national test or is this just through the state of Virginia?
State of Virginia.
So what is our state benchmark? And then what is our high prof, hi, high proficiency or high passing rate? That's what I want to compare myself to. And then from a board's perspective with regards to the brief, we can get the data in the brief, but it, it then comes back to the board when it comes to policy and budget. With regards to budget, do we need to budget for more staffing? Do we need to budget for more, uh, PD uh, time, you, those types of interventions? If we're not meeting the benchmark, what are, what is the administration doing in order to accelerate us to the benchmark? So that's what I, that's what I want to see.
Similar to what I would have expected from a brief, a real, something to be, you know, put it into context. And I think, I think we're asking, seem, I, we're asking for the same thing. Um, I think the numbers only tell part of the story, but put, having that more descriptive presentation would be helpful to me. Okay. All right, Mr. Jordan, thank you for letting me interrupt you and please continue.
I'm, I'm done.
Are you done? Okay. Okay, thanks. Anyone else have any questions on PALS? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pull. Um, but do not go far because we have item two point zero three, our quarter one student grades. Oh, Mr. Clanton, go ahead while he's pulling.
And while you're pulling that up, as far as, because there were recommendations of intervention and what we're going to do. So just so we have the necessary resources already in place to ensure that these things can be completed, right? Except, right? We have the necessary resources in place as far as.
To do what we said we needed to do at this time?
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And you'll let us know when we don't.
All right. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. And this time I'm here to review our quarter one grades. This presentation will focus on students failing two or more classes by grade level and demographics, as well as how this data is being used to provide instructional support across our schools. Starting with the elementary trend data, over the past four years, the bar, the bar graph gives the percentage of grade level of students failing two or more classes. And the tables below each graph have the number of students each percentage represents. So we have the N and the percents on the graph this year. As seen for grade one, six point two percent of the students, or one hundred and twenty-nine students in total across the division, failed two or more classes for quarter one of this year. Each of the grade levels represented have shown decreases from last year within one percent of the fall of twenty nineteen, except for grade three, which shows a two point nine percent increase from the fall of twenty nineteen. Here we see the secondary data. All grades show a reduction from the fall of twenty twenty. Additionally, grade nine also showed a reduction from the fall of twenty nineteen. Looking at the data by demographics and including all students, there were reductions across all groups from last fall to this fall. Additionally, students with disabilities and English learners saw decreases from the fall of twenty nineteen. Separating the data for students who are learning in the online environment, the numbers were too small to display the data by grade level. However, this graph shows the comparison of student learning on, students learning online versus in person that are failing two or more classes. As a reminder, the original plan for VSA was to only enroll students who were successful in the online learning last year. However, with the spike, spike in COVID numbers, the decision was made to allow any student who requested to enroll to be accepted in the VSA. Dr. Catalo and his team are working closely with online teachers and principals to ensure additional supports are being offered to online learners based on this data. Now we'll start to look at the data by grade level. For first grade students, all of the subgroups had declines from last year, and students with disabilities, English learners, African American, Hispanic, and students of two or more races showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen. Second grade students showed declines from last fall in all subgroups except for students of two or more races. Additionally, students with a disability, English learners, African American, Asian, Hispanic, and white students all showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen. Third grade had declines in all subgroups from the fall of twenty twenty and saw declines from the fall of twenty nineteen in students with disabilities and students of two or more races. All subgroups in fourth grade showed declines from fall twenty twenty, and students with disabilities and African American students showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen as well. Fifth grade students showed declines across the board, and students with disabilities as well as white students showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen. And sixth graders saw declines across the board from the fall of twenty twenty, while all subgroups saw increased percentages from the fall of twenty nineteen. Seventh graders saw declines across the board from the fall of twenty twenty, while all subgroups saw increased percentages from the fall of twenty nineteen. Our eighth grader saw declines across the board from fall twenty twenty, while English learners, African American, and Hispanic students showed declines from fall of twenty nineteen. Our ninth grade students saw declines across the board from, from fall of twenty twenty, and students in all subgroups showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen. Tenth graders saw declines across the board from the fall of twenty twenty, while Hispanic students showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen. With our eleventh graders, they saw declines in all subgroups except for students with disabilities from the fall of twenty twenty, while Asian students showed declines from the fall of twenty nineteen. And finally, with our twelfth. showed declines from the fall of 2019. And finally, with our 12th graders, all subgroups, except for English learners, showed declines from last fall, while students with disabilities and Asian students showed declines from the fall of 2019. Central leadership and school level leadership are taking a holistic approach to reviewing all data, including failure reports. A consistent cause for many failing grades is associated with discipline and attendance. Therefore, the school level data meetings focus on all areas of student concern. And a few items principals are focusing on are meeting with their teams with failure reports to analyze them and note trends and patterns, both with some teachers who may need additional supports as well as individual students. Appropriate cross curricular intervention teams meet to determine interventions of supports for specific students and teachers. Interventions include the use of additional remediation time built into the school day, after school, in person and or virtual instruction, and the promotion of the use of FEV tutor service. For attendance, schools are using their attendance teams in determining root causes for lack of attendance, visiting homes, conducting student and family intervention conferences, and providing incentives for students to increase daily class attendance. Each high school has implemented a version of tiered systems of support with interdisciplinary teams to support students and teachers. And high schools are also providing additional opportunities for students to recover grades as they go through the year, led by members of their instructional leadership teams in order to keep students on track to graduate on time if as they enter the ninth grade. Schools are also providing targeted additional supports to seventh and 10th grade students as they are likely in school in that school level for the first time in their school career. Learning support staff will continue to work with school teams to monitor student progress as a part of regular school data meetings, with a particular focus on grade 11 students. Focus of discussion will include identifying appropriate supports, including professional development for staff, including observation and feedback, and maximizing instructional supports for students to include IEP decisions around additional resources and opportunity for recovery students, use of the Division Tutoring Service, consideration of causes of difficulty such as discipline or behavior, and possible use of C services to provide appropriate appropriately for needed students. In addition to reviewing failure data, school data meetings include a review of assessment data from the classroom level to the state level to ensure necessary student supports are in place. Data from New Software added this year is also now being reviewed at all of our data meetings. And these monthly meetings are not only providing a laser focus on data at the school and classroom level, they are providing supports at every school where needs arise. With this holistic approach to looking at data, students are not students who are not proving to be successful are being provided necessary supports to become successful. And that concludes the grading presentation. At this time, we stand ready for questions you may have.
Questions? Ms. Camson?
Oh, thank you. You know, looking at this makes me sad like it does, I guess, each one we're going to see this this year as we try and recover from the pandemic and look at the year that we did in person. I mean, that we were not doing in person until the end of the year. So when I I agree with you. When I look at what's happening already this year, it's it shows great promise, but it makes us sad to see how far we have to go to make that happen. So as we go through this, and you'll be doing, we'll see these every quarter with the report cards, so we'll be able to look for improvement there. I guess I look at my blame myself because I just never would have thought we had that much loss of of by keeping them home to keep them safe. I'm just rambling. I get because I'm just so disappointed and sad when I not disappointed because everyone worked so hard last year. Our teachers were working so hard, but we were trying an instructional delivery method that we had not put the we had not as a country, we have not prepared for that delivery of instruction online. And in fact, it was interesting to look at the online data when that popped up. So all I can say is good work, everyone, with taking us down in failures. From already, we're seeing the improvement there with these first set of grades. So that tells me that the hard work that our teachers and other educators in the district are doing, they're working just as hard now as they were working doing last year, but now they're doing what they know how to do and have experience in, and that's in-person education. So congratulations for these drops. I mean, that gray area just kind of floored me, but when I see next to it, I see the progress that we're making already. So congratulations to all of our staffs and all of our schools and our central office for the improvement that we're already starting to see. And that gives me the expectation that it's going to get better each quarter as we look at it because failing two or more classes is a disaster for a student. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Basin?
Thank you, Dr. Poole. First, I I'm really glad that we're able to look at the quarter grades, which I know in years past, we hadn't received the data at that level as far as grades go. So while we've seen declines, it's really eye opening to see over the years what percentage of our students have been failing classes, two or more classes over the years. And so that that to me, you know, to Ms. Camson's point, is really disheartening. But I think it also creates opportunities for us going forward. And as a board, I think that, you know, as we consider our future goal, you know, our goals that we set going forward, I think it really highlights the need for being intentional around certain subgroups in our focus and attention, such as our African American students or economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and our ELL in particular, because the differences there are are really stark. So I really advocate for this board to be intentional in our goal setting going forward. Also, I think it also at the high school level in particular, I mean, I I just looking over the years, ninth grade, 10th grade, I mean, it really, I mean, I guess it it really it really got to me, and it really made me think that we really need to get to a point where we're reimagining the high school education curriculum. We really need to make it relevant for the student to show up every day, be in the classroom. Because when you look at that, you look at the chronic absentee data, I mean, it's really, it's telling us a story, and we need to start paying attention to that story and grabbing this opportunity right now and doing something with it. So I think we need to create some more, not only a culturally responsive curriculum, but also a relevant to the workforce, to college. When we think about our budget and our policy, we really got to think and be innovative about what we're going to do different, which is, you know, something I want to see more of when we are getting presentations. What are some of the recommendations around what we're going to do different? Because right now I'm seeing a lot of not just I'm not just talking about North Public Schools, but in general, you it's like we can't keep doing the same thing. And I know, Dr. Poole, you're you're also, I know, in our policy discussions, passionate about some of these things and making things more relevant, the curriculum more relevant for students. But that's something I really, I think it's in a crisis situation when I look at the high bars across, not just because of the pandemic, but it's been that way. And so we've got to do something different.
Dr. Bertsong, respectfully, this this presentation is around student grades and not an exploration of the curriculum that we're implementing. This this is all about grades. We haven't even presented the curriculum. And I think you would find if we did a presentation on our curriculum, that there is some innovation there, student creative creativity in ensuring that lessons are relevant for our students every day. This presentation is specific to quarter one grades, not an exploration of our implemented curriculum.
Right. I I mean, I I understand that. So, you know, and I think to that point, I think it would be helpful then to put that into that context, you know, when coming to the board. But I think the quarter one grades do tell or ask those questions. What does the curriculum look like? Is it? Is it relevant for students? Could it be more relevant for a student? You know, I think it still raises questions about that. And if you have that information, I think it'd be useful then to provide that for us in these presentations.
Mr. Jordan?
Can you go to slide 14, please?
I can do my best.
So I was appreciative that we started looking at this as it was related to the pandemic. And I know a lot of the conversation we just had of the presentation we just received gave focus to the recovery or the changes from the pandemic year to the current year. But one of the things that, you know, I co-chaired this task force on students in schools and challenging environments with the Virginia School Boards Association. And part of what we've been trying to bring attention to is the pandemic highlighted, exas- increased disparities and inequities that that existed. But these disparities and inequities existed prior to the pandemic. And I think we have to find a way to give focus and attention to to that as well. So for example, with this eighth grade slide, if you look at African American students in 2018, we had 12.5%. If you look at just this slide in general as it is across the board, now if you go to slide 15, pre-pandemic, current pandemic, there's something significant that it would seem to me, we would, even though I recognize this is just first quarter data, but it just stands out to me the significance between the eighth grade performance across the board, but also the eighth grade to ninth grade performance by by certain subgroups. So if we just look at the African American subgroup here at the ninth grade level. So in in 2021, it shows that 41% of African American students are failing two or more grades. So we can talk about how that is a 16-point difference between last year and this year, but also think we just need to talk about the fact that four in 10 African American students are failing two or more grades as they enter into the ninth grade. And if you compare the gap in terms of what the performance was from the eighth grade entering to the ninth grade. So I know there's, you know, we've had some discussions over the last several months about prioritizing and giving focus to African American students. We've had some data that's also done some drill down around African American boys in particular. But to me, four in 10 students, period. But in this particular case, four in 10 students, African American students in a school division that serving overwhelmingly African American students is something that ought to be a concern for us, be a priority for us, be something that we highlight and delve into and not let it get lost as we just talked about from the pandemic year to non pandemic year. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Go to the next slide, ninth grade to 10th grade. So again, we see one in three African American students in the first quarter in in 10th grade also failing two or more classes. If you go to 11th grade, we see there it's 27%. Again, that's a 14% increase from where we were in in 2018. When you compare it to other subgroups, you can see that the gap is almost doubled. And if we go to 12th grade, you know, here we are again, we're seeing these trends, and in particular, African American students, socially economically disadvantaged students, and in this case, in this case, also Hispanic or Latino students being three times that of of white students. And so, you know, in some ways, this could be an indicator that we have a system that provides great support for some students, but clearly is not performing as well as it needs to be for all students, and in particularly African American students and students of color. And so I never really looked at this in terms of, you know, whether how hard teachers were working. I know teachers work hard all the time. What I think there's a there's some institutional and structural issues that we need to deal with as a division as a whole, so that we are equipping our teachers and with everything that they need to to address this pandemic that's not a health pandemic, but a pandemic that's an academic pandemic that I think for too long, we just continue to accept as it being okay. So I appreciate the the data. I just wanted to highlight what the chart said to me. And again, as you were sharing some of your findings, I think that's another example of a summary or brief that just, and I don't mean a multi-page brief, I mean, a one pager that just highlights some of the points that you pointed out so that we can see them and visualize them, you know, not just in the oral presentation, but as we go back and look at data after this, you know, we can give some focus to some of the items that you highlighted. But I just wanted to pause there because for me, it's a crisis, and it was prior to the pandemic, and it is now. And I think we have some resources at our disposal that can be utilized to close and eliminate these these gaps that we see. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. or Dr. Poole. Up next, we have item 2.05, student enrollment update for school year 22.
Is it enrollment next? I'm sorry. Or is it attendance?
Oh, attendance. Sorry, I'm not wearing my glasses. Yes, 2.04. I guess I'd already crossed them. Okay, you're right. I can't wear my mask and my glasses at the same time.
All right. Excuse me one second. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Planton, members of the Board, and Dr. Bertsong. I'm now here with Dr. Gibson to provide an update on the first quarter attendance and chronic absenteeism. The data, this data will cover attendance rates and trend data, rates by level and demographics, quarantine and non-quarantine absence rates, students who are at risk of being chronically absent, and students who are already chronically absent, as well as ongoing efforts to improve attendance. Starting with the attendance rates for the elementary level over the past three years, these percentages represent the total days of attendance for all students divided by the total number of days possible. As an example, there were 39 days in the first quarter. So with 2,148 first grade students, there were possible of 83,772 days to attend for all students. There was a total of 6,450 absences in that grade level, which makes an attendance rate of 60 of 90, it's 92.3%. This rate averages all students together to get the average daily attendance. As seen in the data, there are declines at each grade level from last year and the year before. The same can be seen on this data with declines in all grade levels from the past two years. Some of the possible causes may be from older siblings having to stay home to watch younger siblings who are sick or quarantined, parents and guardians that may be holding children home being more cautious than in previous years. If one child is quarantined, maybe they're holding all their children home, and some simply due to the fear of COVID. Please note, the data on this slide is no longer trend data, but split by level within each category. This slide shows this year's quarter one attendance data rates for each level by demographics. As seen in high school, our students with disabilities and students from low income households show a lower rate than their counterparts in elementary and middle school. Additionally, black students at the secondary level have a lower attendance rate. This slide shows absence data to reflect quarantine and non-quarantine rates. As an example, in kindergarten, the absentee rate is 8.5%, with 1.2% of those students being marked as absent. point two percent of those students being marked as absent due to being quarantined. This graph shows the percentage of students in each grade level that have exceeded a ten percent absence rate, or they were absent four or more days during the first quarter. This data takes the attendance by student and does not average all students' attendance. Therefore, in ninth grade, thirty-six percent of the students missed four or more days each. The shaded areas are the bands for accreditation. Schools at level one, a school is at level one if it's below fifteen percent, or the green area, of their students being absent ten percent or more of the days possible, or we call that chronically absent. Level two is the yellow area, which is between fifteen and twenty-five percent. And then level three is the red area, which is greater than twenty-five percent. And there's also included in board docs, a listing of schools' attendance rates by school and percentages for ten percent or higher. Here is the same data by demographics. As seen here, the percentage of students who are black or have a disability or are from low-income households have the highest rates. This data shows the percentage of students in each grade level who are already chronically absent, which means they have already missed seventeen or more days of school. And this is the same data by demographics. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Gibson to review ongoing efforts to approve, improve attendance.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Clanton, School Board members, and Dr. Bertzall. Efforts to improve attendance are ongoing. Schools have attendance teams that meet weekly or monthly to review attendance and document efforts to increase, to decrease chronic absenteeism. Parents send notes and documentation for absences. Staff and the attendance technician continue to make phone calls and conduct home visits. Administrators and attendance technicians are conducting family intervention conferences. Administrators are also reviewing absenteeism and setting goals for attendance and academic success during reinstatement conferences in cases where out-of-school suspensions are negatively impacting attendance. Providing asynchronous assignments and online to support to quarantine students have also helped decrease chronic absenteeism. As school days transpire, the absenteeism rate of students should improve if students continue to come to school and don't continue to be absent. For students who have already missed seventeen or more days, the school teams are working to make sure that the absences stay at a minimal and we provide them with support and connections so that they can come and succeed in school. Our school staff will continue to work with students to ensure attendance matters are addressed. Schools are also constantly working to revise attendance based on quarantined but present students who come to school asynchronously, receive instructional support during the quarantine period, and complete their assignments. Not only can each school use the division's weekly monitoring tool to instantly know its level of chronic absenteeism, each school has also been able to assess each student's absenteeism rate, and they can use this tool to support students individually. If a school sees trends during certain times of the year where absences increase, they host drives to meet families' needs. These drives include school attendance drives, coat drives, uniform drives, food drives, shoe drives, things that are given to families and students so that we can eliminate the barriers that may negatively impact school attendance. Thank you for your time and for allowing us to present this information to you. At this time, we are prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I want to start with a question because I don't think I've asked one yet. So could you name the top three barriers?
Talk through the barriers?
Top three barriers to attendance?
Barriers to attendance?
That you're seeing among these students?
Yes, I spoke to some trends. When it gets cold, many times our children have to walk to school. They don't have coats, so we host coat drives. The community comes together and they donate coats so that students can be warm and they can come to school. There are other times where uniforms are dirty, parents don't have time for laundry, more uniforms are provided so that that time between laundry time can be extended so that they will have clean clothes so that, again, they will come to school, they will feel good about being in school. They also host times where they give food, just meeting those basic human needs so that people can feel comfortable. If you're hungry or you're cold, you can't learn. And so we try to make sure that we are tearing down those barriers. They have what they need so they can get up, they can get dressed, and they can come right on into the schoolhouse.
Thank you.
Based on my experience, especially with older children, sometimes our older children will stay home if they have a younger sibling that's sick, if a parent has to go to work. You know, sometimes certainly if our parents don't go to work, they don't get paid, they can't pay their water bill, their light bill, and things of that nature. So many of our older children sometimes are home with their younger siblings when they are sick or for whatever reason they need to stay home with a younger child.
Thank you. Mrs. C, or Mrs. C, Ms. Camson, I know you had your hand up.
Thank you. I have just a few quick questions to clarify on the absentee part. When the students are put on quarantine by the school, or are they, and they're not sick, they're just on quarantine because of exposure when they're trapped, do those day, and those students, do those days count as absences for the students and go into this data? Or are they allowed to do some virtual stuff at home and count as present?
When students are put on quarantine by the school, they are quarantine-present. We supply them with work, instruction, teachers go online to assist them outside the regular school day. If more than half the class is put on quarantine, then the teacher will teach concurrently. So far, we've had very little, if any, concurrent teaching, but we make sure that they are marked present, it is quarantine-present, but they get credit and they get their work and their education continues.
Okay. Also, I want to do this quick because I know that people have questions. When the, when a student is dropped after ten straight days of absenteeism?
Fifteen.
Fifteen straight days? So they've dropped after fifteen. They're not, we are way enough into the year that they're not included in this data either, are they?
Well, we have had a situation where students have not enrolled or have been dropped because of the fifteen-day absence. And through working with the truancy guidelines we have in place, we have gotten those students re-enrolled, and so they are counted in these days. And we continue to work with them to keep them in school and provide them with the support they need.
Yes, so as long as you've solved it, but for the kids that haven't been solved and they're gone after fifteen days, they're not included in the data, are they?
Yes, the data pulled was for active students only.
Thank you.
So if they met the drop, then they were dropped, so they weren't active. So this data was pulled with active students only.
Okay. Another question, when we're looking at absentee rates and we have, and how does that compare? Maybe I should say we're looking at attendance rates. How is our attendance measured against the state? For example, it seems like we needed to have ninety-five percent of children present. Is that, or am I wrong on that numbers? And also the numbers for on-time graduation. I guess we don't have any data on on-time gradu- oh.
Slide seven shows you the green, the yellow, and the red. And the green will get you up to fifteen percent or less, you're in the level one. Fifteen to twenty-four point nine 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 gives you the level two accreditation rating. And then twenty-five percent or over gives you the level three. So as each, there was a report on board docs that showed you each school's present rating. Schools can look at that every Monday. And it will give them their current, if we were to have accreditation on that day, they would either be red, green, or yellow.
Right, thank you for that information. My question was, how does that compare with the expectations that the state gives us? We're supposed to have a certain level for attendance, or does the state not do that this year because of the pandemic that we're just recovering from?
That particular rating, Ms. Camson, at the end of the year, as our attendance adds up each week, we look for the current ratings you see in board docs to decrease, to get closer to the green areas for everybody. So by the time we get to June, when we close out and do all of our calculations, that calculation that the schools are looking at each week will be their accreditation.
So it's an end-of-the-year data?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, you know, so my questions are, you know, general and also looking at that school-by-school report that was provided. So the Virtual Scholars Academy, for instance, what I saw, so the absences there coupled with what we saw with the quarter one grades and the percentage of students that are failing two or more classes, how are we addressing that? Because if I recall correctly, when we had previously talked about VSA for this year, there were, I think, requirements or expectations that were part of that agreement. And seeing both the absences and the quarter one grades, can you, can you speak to how we're working with those families to ensure that their students are getting what they need?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Dr. Cataldo to come up, or did he slip out? All right, so as I said in the grading script, the, Dr. Cataldo and his team are working directly with the principals and the teachers with those students now that they have the failure report to ensure that they're completing work. Many of those are from asynchronous classes where the students may not have just completed the work that needed to be turned in. So they're working individually with the principals who have the students, because the students are still listed at the school even though they're in VSA. So he's working directly with those principals to work with their teachers and counselors to reach out to those students to make sure they're getting the supports they need before, you know, a final step would be, you know, the in-person would be required for them if they're not successful at the Virtual Scholars Academy. But they have a full plan in effect. He and I talked about it last week, now that this report is out of what they're doing to make sure those students are becoming successful.
Okay. So at what point is, so what's the threshold of what being successful looks like? Because they're already failing two or more classes. So are we waiting for the second semester or we, I mean, not second semester, for the second quarter grades to see if there's any improvement? Or do you know, you know, is there a threshold that we're looking for?
I think, I believe they're looking at interim grades in the middle of the term. And if it's still the same by the end of the second semester, there'll be that high possibility of in-person learning for the students to come in. I think, you know, for many of our students, this, if they're in an asynchronous class, it's somewhat new for them. Dr. Cataldo is working on, we've hired mentors for those students as well to be able to reach out to those students to collect their work and make sure they're submitting their work, to make sure they have tutors, whether it's the virtual tutor through FUV or our own folks tutoring them online, to ensure that they're on track. But they will do, they will do frequent checks during the second quarter before we get to second semester. So it's not a wait-and-see game. It's attacking it as we go along.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
So my next question is, so seven, seven of our schools are in the green. So majority are in the yellow and predominantly in the red for chronic absenteeism. And, you know, you talked about barriers earlier, and I would like to hear more about how you identified the specific barriers and, you know, and who is on the attendance team? I think you said it, but I couldn't hear every word. So if you could share, who's on the attendance team and how do we know exactly what the barriers are?
Okay. I'm going to start with the attendance teams. Each school has an attendance team. That team consists of an administrator, school counselor, school social worker, teachers, the behavior specialist, the attendance technician. Those people work together with the students. If there are other resources in place for that student, such as therapeutic day treatment or one-on-one assistance through CEES, then those people are also participating with that student's attendance plan. And they work together to work with the family and the student to do the check-ins, to get the kid to school every day, to get the kid in class, and make sure that they're progressing. Does that answer that first part?
That answers that question, but along those lines, are, I believe we still share amongst different schools some of those resources. Is that correct?
Yes, some of those resources are shared. We, beyond the school level, we do have a multidisciplinary division-level team that is in place and ready to receive referrals. Schools have to complete certain processes and supports on the school level before they can refer a family to the district-level team. We do have six families who have been referred to truancy court. We have one family who has been processed and has enrolled and has begun to work the truancy plan. So we're working our processes according to the policies and guidelines that have been set forth, and we are very slow, especially in the pandemic, to refer people to truancy court. We're really trying to work with our families through the human issues to make the connections we need to make for success, not just immediately now, but building into the future.
Okay. And to that point, you know, seeing the magnitude of chronic absenteeism, I believe, you know, as we talk about the budget and we talk about needs, that we really think about having a more robust system or robust resources to support the effort to ensure that they're in the classroom.
And I agree, right, I agree with you, Ms. Basine. Right now, we do have openings in our attendance technician department. It is an area that is hard to staff. However, the school-building principals and those attendance teams are working with the staff they do have to try to ensure that they're encouraging students to come and keeping up with our students. The pandemic exacerbated a problem that we already had, and we are aware of that, but we're not making any excuses in our monthly data meetings with our principals. As they talk about their data, attendance is one of the areas that they do address. We listen to what they're doing, we ask what they need, they share ideas, they make requests, and we respond to those so that we can help them. But attendance is an ongoing issue that if you're not there, you can't learn. So that plagues your academic achievement. We will continue, we hold school every day, we will continue to be there for our children, to work with them, and to get the traction and the momentum we need to move them forward.
Okay. And what are we doing to improve, you know, well, looking at, you know, our school climate data and what are we doing to improve school climate in those schools that, you know, may have areas where the positive responses are limited?
I don't want to stray too far from the topic because now we're moving from attendance to climate, so I don't want to misspeak or overspeak without having an opportunity to really examine the qualitative data as well as the quantitative data that would speak to that topic.
Okay. Well, I'd appreciate, like, in the, in the future, because wanting to be at school is one of those important conditions that impact attendance. So that's why I'm asking that question.
I can appreciate that.
About school climate. But I'll let others ask questions and I'll come back later.
Any other questions about absentee rates? Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Jordan?
Not necessarily, not necessarily a question, but a comment. So it's also the parent's responsibility to make sure that the children are in school. And I am very grateful for the staff of trying to meet parents and families, especially if there are hardships that are being faced. Definitely can understand that, and I appreciate the responses that you give with regards to the barriers for getting children to school. In working with our PTAs and other resources that have direct engagement with parents and families, if there are other aspects that we can do to reach a family from perhaps a non-school-related person, but perhaps from a peer family, we can consider those as well. And if there are other items that you have suggestions that we can work with other entities with to help encourage families and perhaps dive deeper into any of those barriers. Because the parents need to make sure that, I know that they understand the value of an education, but if there are other items that we can do to assist in that matter, then let's do it.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. So I want to go back to, you know, part of what
So I want to go back to, you know, part of what Ms. Bassin pointed out, that, what was it, seven schools that we have in the green and some of those schools even have double-digit chronic absenteeism rates. So it looks like there's obviously something that's impacting across the district. And you mentioned some of the impact around the pandemic. Anything more specific, I mean, you know, not necessarily anecdotes, but are challenges with transportation having an impact? Are we finding that at schools where we have instructional absences that that's impacting? It's got to be, what, what is it just based upon this first quarter data that really, that you're hearing from principals and these, and teachers and the teams of what's really driving, driving this district?
Dr. Birdsong is prompting, Dr. Birdsong.
I'm sorry?
May I, Mr. Jordan? I, I think one variable that we haven't really truly discussed was, is the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic still. I, I do think the fear of COVID and COVID-related issues has contributed to a decline in the attendance. For example, if, if there are sick, sick family members that families need to take care of, I, I think that impacts students going to school, whether they be, you know, there'd be some emotional concerns about maybe a sick uncle, aunt, grandmother, or whomever, that sometimes the children may stay at home to support their families through that. I also know that our parents are being much more aware of, of COVID-related symptoms and they're keeping their children home. For example, maybe three years ago, a parent would have allowed a child to go to school with a runny nose. Today, I, I believe, I truly believe our parents are, are very aware, very cognizant of, of how their children are feeling and if maybe they have a runny nose. Now, because it is a COVID symptom, they're keeping their children home. So I do, I really think that is impacting the attendance. Various issues dealing with this pandemic that we're still in the middle of.
Yeah, and I, I would, I believe that as well. I, I think that, again, going back to the point of having pandemic mitigation resources is just, is just critical. And we have some schools with a chronic absentee rate greater than 50%. I mean, that's, that's alarming. And so how do we, on a school-by-school basis, truly give the supports that are needed, whether they are internal to the school division or, or not? I just, 50% is, 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 is more than significant. And the fact that, you know, seven, only seven of our schools are in the green area just to me cries out for something more. I don't have an answer to it. But I do think it, it, it highlights for us the significance of the challenges and opportunities before us and why the intentionality that we bring with these resources that we have to, to address it is, is generational in the making. I mean, a lot of us know what it took for us to try to recover from the great recession that we never really recovered from. And, and now with, with this chronic absentee information in just the first quarter, I just think it's something we really need to figure out how to elevate and, and, and drill down on. We just can't have students missing 17 days of class in a quarter. We just, just can't do it. So I, but I appreciate the, the data and if there's more that we can hear in terms of immediate use of resources that we have available to address this, I think we need to look at it now. And I, I do just have one, one other question then, because I'm in shock mode right now. But we had one high school that was in the 12% range in terms of chronic absenteeism, and then we have the four other high schools in the red. Any, any idea of what the one high school is, is doing that, that we can learn from that's different? I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's transportation. I don't know if it's attendance zone. I don't know what it is, but it's just kind of stood, stood out for me that one is that?
Norview High School has a strong walking community. Granby High School does not. Having served as principal at Granby, my kids come from all over the city, have it, knowing that if they don't get on that bus that drives through, then I pretty much won't see them that day unless they walk from the other side of town. So transportation in some of those cases may be an issue, Mr. Jordan, but in many of the issues in speaking with and listening to the data report from the Norview High Principal, he, he is really, really, he is, he will tell you, he is working that attendance thing. If they're not there, he is on that phone. The high school principals do share, they collaborate. Right now, a 10% chronic absence is four and a half days or four days. So by the time we get to the half of the year, we're anticipating to see the, the chronic absenteeism decrease. Will they all get to green? No, I can't tell you that. We have schools that have been in the green for years. This year, they're deep in the red. This pandemic and the effect it has had, the impact it has had on our families is tremendous. And there are various reasons. Some of our children, we don't know where they live. We're very loose with our enrollment in Norfolk. Once we get them, we hold on to them. And if we find out they're coming from out of zone, we still hold on to them because we want them in school, and that's what's first and foremost. If they're at 17 days, we will continue to work with them. If they're not there, we're going to try to keep them from getting there. But this might not look better half year. It's, it's not going to be a 100 or 360-degree turnaround. It is going to take us some time to dig out of the things that have transpired and impacted our families because of the pandemic that were already impacting them before the pandemic.
Yes, um, yes, I, I just, um...
We're not giving up? We'll continue to work?
No, I'm, I'm not giving up.
We know what our goals are.
I'm not giving up.
We know you're in our corner.
I'm not giving up either. I'm just saying that with the millions of dollars that we have at our disposal, that's what, that those resources are there for us to address. You know, my children graduated from Granby High School, so I get that. But then there are also other high schools that have a walking tradition, but never had the transportation supports needed. And so, and I know we're dealing with bus drivers and all the challenges that we have, but when we see that we have a couple of high schools that are approaching six out of 10 children being chronically absent, that calls, in my opinion, for doing something different with whatever it is that the schools say that they need. And, and so being able to hear what that is, I know you all are hearing it, but being comfortable coming back to the board and say, we want to rework some funding recommendations or any other recommendations that we may have brought to you previously, so we don't find ourselves going two quarters like this. We, we can't go two quarters like this, in my opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
So to, to that point, so you know, is the, is, is the attendance data collected in a standard manner across grade levels? Because, you know, seeing with just seven, seven schools in the green and seeing, it, it does seem to say that there is a systemic issue, you know, issue in, you know, across the division. But it could also mean that the data collection for attendance may also vary. So I'm just asking, is there, I know it might be different for elementary to middle, to the secondary level.
The schools are following the rules and policies for recording attendance each month in our newsletters. Our operations division, Ms. Sophia Almond, who works with attendance, reminds our principals constantly of accurate attendance recording is non-negotiable. So we are constantly working to ensure that we are consistent across the board and we are following the policy and rules for recording attendance as mandated by the state and the school system.
Okay, and is it done at a particular time in the day?
By the end of the day, teachers complete their attendance and submit it in synergy. This SDS in the school monitors and makes sure that she reports to the administrator in charge of attendance if attendance is not recorded so that the teacher can go in and record that attendance. But we are following the rules for recording attendance.
Okay, okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gibson.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, up next we have student enrollment update. Dr. Poole?
All right. Good evening. Here we go. I'll just click it on the computer. So, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Planton, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here with Mr. Fuddy, our Senior Coordinator for Research and Planning, to present this fall's enrollment report. As you know, enrollment changes as students come and go throughout the year. However, an official count must be reported to VDOE by September 30th of each year, even though it is a non-static number. Beyond reporting enrollment on September 30th each year, the division also reports the average daily membership on March 31st each year, which is used to calculate student-based funding. In order to estimate for budgetary purposes, there is a preliminary enrollment for the next year created in December. It is then reviewed in late January and final projections are then set in early February. Some of the factors that may impact enrollment are the local economy and the business closures, an aging population with less school age children, birth rate changes, military deployments or transfers, residential redevelopment, private school enrollment, and as we have seen over the past couple of years, the impact of COVID-19. The first set of data shows the actual numbers reported for last year and this year in a comparison to the projections that were created for this year and finalized last February. As seen on this slide, the actual enrollment was 807 students lower than projections and 718 students lower than last year. However, when including pre-K, the projections were only 556 students lower than projected and 467 students lower than last year. The largest declines as seen are in elementary grades, while high school enrollment increased by 47 students. This graph shows the projected enrollment against the actual enrollment for each grade level. The orange bar is the projected enrollment, which is on the left, and the, and the brown bar is the actual enrollment, which is on the right. Every elementary level saw declines, with the largest being in first grade from projections. This follows the decreased kindergarten enrollment from last year in first grade. This graph shows the district enrollment over five years, both with and without pre-K. As seen on the slide, the division enrollment continues to decline. K-12 enrollment has declined by 2,870 students or 10% over the past five years, and enrollment has decreased by 2,017 students or 7.2% since pre-COVID in 2019. Here we see the enrollment pattern over the past three years by race. Overall, these demographics have stayed consistent in our division. This slide shows enrollment by students with disabilities, students of low socioeconomic status, and English learners. As we see on the slide, there's a three, a 7.3% decline in students from low-income households. Some of this change can be attributed to NPS being a part of the Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP grant, which does not allow the division to accept applications for free and reduced lunch. Here's the data for enrollment by numbers, enrollment, sorry, enrollment numbers by level over the past five years. There's been a decline of over, over five years of 2,349 students or 15.8% at the elementary level, 154 students or 2.5% at the middle level, and 367 students or 4.8% at the high school level. Post-COVID with elementary enrollment has seen a decline of 1,592 students or 11.3% since the 2019, 2020 school year. The final two slides of data show five-year trends by grade level. This slide shows data from kindergarten to fifth grade. There is a slight increase in enrollment for kindergarten this year as compared to last year. However, the enrollment is still 12.9% lower than pre-COVID. And here is the data for the secondary levels. And that concludes the enrollment report. Mr. Fuddy and I here for questions you may have.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
I don't know if it's a question as much as just for board and administration consideration. So at the, at the state, you can see the school-by-school changes in enrollment. And part of what, what I've tried to encourage us to give some focus on is the impact of redevelopment and St. Paul's redevelopment on, on some of our schools, not only within the area, the redevelopment area, but also where families are typically relocated from one predominantly African-American school to another. So when I look at the state's data at PB Young Senior Elementary School, for example, it shows that the enrollment there is down 36% from the fall of 2019 to the fall of 2021. 166 student change to the negative, loss of 166 students. When you look at Todd Water Park Elementary School, it's at 27 and a half percent change, representing 72 students that are different from 2019, a loss from 2019 to 2021. But then if you look at Southside STEM Academy, where we are today, they've seen an increase of 15.9% of 120 students. And so I just think it is very important that we look at some of this school-by-school data and see what the impact is, if any, on the movement of, of households and of children in households, and that we are providing the supports that are, that are truly needed. So, for example, in the cases where we see the drop in enrollment, you know, where are those students? And are they getting the supports that they need? And then if we do find that in some cases, just because of the way our city continues to do housing development and placing all of the assisted housing in Ward Four or in Ward Seven, then when the families are able to make their choice, those are the choices that are available. So then if we are seeing 120 students or 16% enrollment increase at Southside STEM, then how do we make sure that we are providing the staffing supports and other supports that a Southside STEM would need when they're seeing a jump in, in student enrollment in that case? There are other areas where we are seeing drops, something else that caught my attention, I think it was Larchmont Elementary? Let's see here. Yeah, so Larchmont Elementary had a 25% drop over two years. So I don't know if that's going back to what we discussed earlier about families that pulled out due to the pandemic and have not come back. But, you know, these are some issues that we really need to talk about and deal with. And we, and when we discuss the ed planning at a holistic level and at a school-by-school level, these are, these are, in my opinion, significant issues we need to stay on top of to make sure that we truly know where our students are. And if they are still within the school division, how are they being supported, especially if they're being impacted by, by redevelopment? So I appreciate the overarching report, but I think the school-by-school report gives an additional snapshot. snapshot. Even Richard Bowling Elementary School, down 109 students over two years. So something's going on, and I think it's important upon us as the school Division to do all we can to stay on top of it and make sure that all the things that we've talked about today, that again, we can resource as best we can to ensure that all students are getting the supports that they need when they need it. So I just wanted to share some of that with you, since I looked at the school-by-school data. And then also, if you look across the state, I think Norfolk is in the top. Yeah, so Norfolk is like 21 in terms of loss of enrollment percentage-wise. I assume out of the 132 school divisions in the Commonwealth. So not only do we have to look at what's happening school-by-school, but there's something happening with our Division where we're in the top tier, if you will, of school divisions across the Commonwealth that are seeing enrollment change. And again, I think a lot of it is pandemic-driven, but that's why we have the pandemic resources.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Planton.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I appreciate the comments of my colleague, Mr. Jordan, regarding looking at school-by-school and some of the items that are affecting, I think, the administration in your presentation. Economy, business closures, population demographics, aging, birth rates, I think all of that kind of aligns with what we saw in the census that came back in, where Norfolk was one of the only urban areas in the state that saw a decrease over the last 10 years. And if you look at it, it would coincide with what we're seeing in this data here. I think that we have to definitely figure out ways that we can market better so that individuals will come back. But I think, you know, we even saw what happened at one of our elementary schools at Larchmont, where, you know, before we built a new school, they literally, a private new school was built across the street, and we had a lot of students who went there. There's a lot of things that we definitely have to do to attract individuals. But I think that there are some things that are kind of out of the control. But I agree, I think it's been mentioned before, that we have to definitely continue to work closely with City Council. When we're looking at even in the St. Paul's part right now, as I was leaving from the student pillar, we had a cab coming down. You can see right there the corner, a Tywhiter Drive and Brambleton. There's a brand-new apartment complex going up. I mean, there's several units, it looks like, are going in.
It's not with children, though.
Coming in.
It's not a family-oriented.
Right, they're only one and two bedrooms. The family's not over there.
Well, I mean, that may be, but you may still have one and two bedrooms. Doesn't mean that you may not have some student population that's coming in there. But overall, I mean, we are a landlocked city that we've got to be very intentional about. But we don't control that, but I'm just saying, I agree with you, and I think it's been mentioned, that we've got to definitely work with Council on how we're going to attract those families back in here. And if you look at, you know, where people are going, like you said, in the respect of, they're coming over here on the south side and they're moving around. But I think there's that bigger overarching thing that we're seeing right now, that there's an overall population and decrease, and that the census kind of showed that to us for the entire city of Norfolk. But how do we market better? That's where I come back in this particular piece, to let folks know about the great things that are going here and why they want to send their students to Norfolk Public Schools. I still think that we have, we're in competition with private schools, and that at the end of the day, we cannot negate the fact that parents have, some parents have choices, and they're exercising those choices. And so I appreciate this information that's here, but I just think, I, you know, I'm still looking at the overarching piece and then working in the Human Services. I definitely understand that there are, this pandemic is having a major effect on individuals. And when we even look at the, you know, even individuals going back to the workforce, people are taking their choices, and their job opportunities are there, and they're not necessarily exercising them. So appreciate it. That is my piece on that one. But, you know, we've got, it's been trending, and we've got to do some things to help support that, moving it up in another direction.
I'd like to add to that context, though. In the latest census, Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads area were the two, saw the most increase in population. So what would...
But not necessarily Norfolk.
But not necessarily Norfolk.
Exactly.
So that's what I'm saying. So there are people moving to our region, and you can see down, you know, the 95 corridor and how the population is growing. What was the other? You'd said something else. But anyways, so, but you're right, we do need to work with our community partners to help increase and make, no, that was the other thing I was going to say, about workforce. One of the things that I've had a lot of discussions over recently is about how, you know, once the big cities shut down, a lot of people left, because they realized, you know, a lot of people are still working remotely and that they can live, they can work from anywhere. And so they're just choosing, you know, to move to more beautiful places and really focusing more on quality of life than how close is my, you know, how long is my commute. So I think, you know, that's another trend that it will be impacting our city, and hopefully we can adapt to attract those families and provide the kind of quality of life that hits all marks for, you know, as far as jobs, affordable housing, green space, and connectivity and so on. So just, go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I don't disagree with much of what was said. I really wasn't trying to focus on the marketing piece of it. I'm just simply, if you look at the, some of the census data, you know, even by wards, so the number of children that are in Ward Four are significantly more, for example, than the number of children we have in Ward One, for example. So I do think that there's a legitimate concern about, you know, in some parts of the city, why parents are making certain choices and all the economic factors. What I, the point I was really trying to make is, is that there are students that may be no longer enrolled in the Division, and then there are students who are enrolled in the Division but may be moving from one challenged area to another challenged area. And what I was really trying to bring some attention to is to make sure that we are giving the focus and the attention and the resource and the supports necessary so that if we are finding that students are moving from, because, you know, we can look at some of the reports from the, that the St. Paul's Task Force puts out, we can see where children are going from Tywhiter or Young to Tanner's Creek, or Southside STEM, or Chesterfield, or Booker Key, or J. Cox, and so forth. So in that particular instance, Norfolk Public Schools is the educational lead. To me, that is within our power and authority to make sure that we provide the supports that are necessary. The other point I was just trying to make is, is yes, the school system can be an advocate for housing that will support positive impact on our schools. And so I think that we need to review that and reconsider that again, so that as we talk about attendance zones, as we talk about developments, as we talk about impact, that we are always at the table advocating to our planning department, to our private sector developers, to our City Council, to take action that's going to bring this synergy together so that the school growth and development and the city's growth and development truly work hand-in-hand for, for all students.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Okay, on the last on our agenda, we have item 2.06, our policy discussion around policy GCBDZ, employee leave. I'm sorry, is no...
There you go.
I do stand up, too. Okay, so we have our policy discussion, policy GCBDZ, employee leave. Has there been any new comments or any changes to that?
So, Madam Chair, we're bringing this policy back for review after the last set of changes that were made. I just want to highlight a couple of things on the new revision that's been posted. One, we are recommending the deletion of the part where it states principals will attempt to take leave, their annual leave when pupils are not in school. We're adding that employees do not get paid beyond their two-year limit for accumulated leave when leaving the Division. The allotment of days per year for personal illness, we added the, just the amounts for 10- and 11-month employees to it. We've altered some of the sick bank procedures, bullets, to keep up with what we do with practice. We did remove the adoption section because that's included in maternity and paternity leave. And we've removed the maternity and paternity leave sections, which are now included in maternity and paternity. And these, all the changes that we made addressed the comments that had been made prior when we posted it and had public comment. So now what we're recommending as a policy review committee is that we do a first and second reading, tonight being the first reading. We'll, Ms. Tanner will post it again for open comments, and we'll hope to wrap this up in January.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, next we have our public hearing on the Ward Four candidate selection process. It's not really about the, it's whatever, not just the process.
No questions.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have Barrett Hicks, followed by Pastor Veronica Thomas of First United Presbyterian Church.
Ms. Tanner, could you go ahead and read the guidelines for public comment?
I can't hear you.
Read the guidelines for public comment.
Say that one more time.
The guidelines for public comment.
Oh. Sure. Oh, okay. Yes. Individuals have three minutes to provide public comments. The Board does not respond to public comments at this time. If you have something written to give to us, you're welcome to do that, or you can email it to the School Board Clerk at schoolboardclerk@npsk12.com. Okay. Is this Pastor Veronica Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, I know you were running in, but...
Yes, and I have prime in at seven o'clock. I tried to stay.
It's okay. I just want to let you know, speakers have three minutes and the timer's going to get started.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, there you go.
Yes. I'm Pastor First United Presbyterian Church, 745 East 29th Street, Norfolk, Virginia, 23504. I'm also president of Let's Make a Difference, a coalition that works together with five churches and five community organizations. What we are doing right now, we are working on dismantling school-to-prison pipeline. And so I want to make sure that the person that comes in understand what that means and how it affects our children. And so I say to you, this person is not in my area, but it affects us all because you just don't vote on Berkeley stuff. You're concerned for everybody. And so one of the things, my understanding was, we would talk at four. Now, when we have this meeting, most people were affected. They are at work. They can't come to this meeting. So we need to look at that. But one thing I must say, I praise God and thank you that you're having it in the community. That's a good thing. But what we have to understand is that we are affected by the decisions that you make. Now, I love Dr. Birdsong. She has Dr. White working with us on dismantling school-to-prison pipeline. We are working with the schools right now. What's important is getting our teachers to believe that we care about them. We need to support them. We need to encourage them. If it's just a card, and that's what we'll be working on. Dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline, our next event is to send thank-you cards to the teachers. We are working with six schools, Young, Tywhiter, Lindenwood, J. Cox, Roughenah, and Booker Key. So we will be working to get those teachers to know. If somebody knows that you care about them, they are pressed their way. They would do harder. And we had, Dr. White said, in one school, 26 teachers was out. What you, how you think that affected the other teachers that had to pick that up? And nobody said, you know, we care what you're going through. And so I'm here to say to you, I know you understand that we elected you, and you're coming around again. So if you desire to be where you are, then you need to do something to bless us, bless our children, establish their way. And believe me, we will support you. We are working faith-based. There are churches, there are individuals, they are all doing. My time is up. I love you. God does too. Be blessed.
Next, we have Barrett Hicks, followed by Debra Brown.
Good evening. I'm Barrett Hicks. I'm the Executive Director for the Concerned Citizens Association, Tywhiter Connection, with signature programs KIPS, Knowledge is Power Summit, and Tywhiter Connection Alumni Association, where we look to put resources to people and people to resources. I want to, I want to thank you guys for coming to the Southside, to the Berkeley campus, still the community. And this crew, directed from my brother, he says, "Thank you for those folks that can't come out." These guys do a great job, and I say, "Thank you." I'm a little taken aback as I view these scores across the board, and as I listen to the comments of, you know, we have more students coming into the school, but are the resources coming. Rodney, you are on point. You are definitely on point. We need the resources, folks. And these schools, and our schools, and our failing schools, they must come. The resources must come with it. Rodney also made the point about best practices, for lack of a better term. If we found it works in one school, why aren't we utilizing those same skill sets in a school like this? I mean, I've been talking about that for about the last 10 years, especially for the last five, as we talked about what happened at ADL versus here at Southside STEM. Come on, folks. At some point, it has to work for all. We got, we talk about this, this tired, people not coming to school. We've had more fights in this school since school opened than I've ever even thought about or heard of at any time. Again, that's about, again, socially-emotional stresses. Again, we need to bring in some mental health support. Mental health support in these communities is so important. And surely we cannot say if there was a fight in school that we're not going to put it out to the parents or to the community. Because it's, when they walk from here over to Diggs Park, over to Oakleaf Park, that's more fights coming. We cannot put that ring or whatever you have on these teachers and on these, on the principals. They have to get that message out there. Again, when these children are home, they must have the devices in hand as well to be able to interact with the schools. I'm being told that there are still students in this school that do not have devices. Come on, folks, that is truly unacceptable. Truly unacceptable. Why do we keep fighting? We keep coming, and you guys keep telling us that we're making it happen. We're working with you, Barrett. Come on, folks. It's time to get it right. These children deserve it. They truly do. Thank you.
Debra Brown. Okay, this concludes our speakers for the School Board Ward Four candidate selection process.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Next on our list, we have our executive session. So can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that we move to executive session.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Tanner?
Just a question for clarification. So from our process, we've received names and applicants for the, for selection. What we are doing now with the closed session, we're just discussing what we're looking for. We're not discussing applications that we received. Is that correct?
We're discussing applications.
No, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, oh, yes. That's what I'm answering. Yes, that's what I'm...
Okay, because, you know, it mentioned the qualifications of specific applicants, so I didn't, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what we are doing. So our goal is to go into closed session. We'll discuss the applicants that we have received, and then with the intent of making a determination of who we will interview. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Right on. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Move that the members of the School Board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for. Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to the subsection one of the act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of the qualifications of specific applicants to fill the seat on the school board of the city of Norfolk, recently vacated by Christine Smith. Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters require the provision of legal advice by the school board council pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the act. The subject of this section of the motion is consultation and briefing in connection with the subject of subsection A of this motion, including but not limited to the discussion of the statutory requirements of the Virginia Code, titles 24.2 and 22.1 regarding elected school board's interim appointment to a seat on that board vacated prior to the end of the member's term. Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay. The portion of our meeting is adjourned.